You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, our service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford.
Finally, we would like to thank you, Henry, for rescuing the video. The July 10, 2024 meeting of the Department of Representatives of the County is called order at 8:19 PM. Please rise for the lead.
I publicly need to reply from the United States of America and to Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Tuchel, will you call the roll?
Representative Adams. Representative Adelman. Representative Alfonso.
Here.
Representative Amore.
Here.
Representative Anderson.
Here.
Representative Black.
Here.
Representative Bonnberger.
Here.
Representative Brooks. Representative Deagle.
Here.
Representative Everson.
Here.
Representative Greenberg.
Here.
Representative Hartwell. Representative Mitchell.
Here.
Representative Pines.
Here.
Representative Ingram. Representative Keith. Representative Leach. Representative Larson.
Present.
Representative Lofredo.
Here.
Representative Maruska.
Here.
Representative McCall.
Here.
And Representative Hartwell just joined the meeting. Representative Alford. Representative Blue Lani. Representative Frisio.
Here.
Representative Sherwood.
Here.
Representative Schesler.
Here.
Representative Sumro.
Here.
Representative Tohill.
Here.
Representative Hurdman.
Here.
Representative Waterman.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Tuchel. Item three, before we call for a motion, the minutes were received by the body today, this afternoon. We all feel brief enough to go on with these minutes. Okay, there's none, and none, that's fine, okay. So I will call for a motion to approve the meeting. The minutes of the June 12th, so. Any discussion or corrections? All in favor of approving the minutes? That's submitted. Say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The minutes are approved. Thank you very much. Received communications, we have a number of communications to act on, so there's a little bit of housekeeping here. The first two are, of course, pieces of correspondence are from members of the public. The first is from Michelle Gagniardi, who is going to lengthy request, and I will try to summarize it as best I can. It is regarding recent legislation in Connecticut, which protects licensed daycare providers in rental units from unreasonable restrictions imposed by the landlords. Bradford can take this a step further by enacting an ordinance that protects licensed home daycare providers from restrictive HOA laws. And Ms. Gagniardi writes, I urge you to consider enacting an ordinance protecting licensed home daycare providers from restrictive HOA bylaws. Thank you, and this will be referred to rules and ordinances for taking them at your next meeting. Second piece of correspondence is from Edgina Pedro Estrella, who is the CEO of Super Cool Metals. This is, their correspondence is in request for consideration of a tax exemption. And again, a lengthy, these correspondence, which I will summarize with a request in line of these considerations. We would like to respectfully request the Town of Bradford to reconsider the imposition of property tax on manufacturing equipment for this year and to ask the RTM to approve at an upcoming meeting our request for exemption on the 2023 grant list as provided for in general statutes, section 12-94E. And that statute was attached. This will be referred to administrative services, and I will give this to Representative McCormick to give to Representative Adelman. The next two pieces of correspondence come from the administration. First, both of these will have to be added to the RTM agenda, so I will read the correspondence and then call for a vote to add each one to the agenda. The first is from Margaret Liberta, who is head of Human Resources for the town. And Margaret writes, let me see, this vote was all out. Request to put on the agenda to consider and if appropriate, approve a tentative agreement between the Town of Bradford and United Public Services Representatives, local number 424, water treatment employees for the period July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2027. I would like to hear a motion to add this to the agenda as new item five. Do I hear the motion? Okay, Representative Henshaw go to second. Second. Okay, that is added to the agenda, and it will become new item five. We might as well add item six to the agenda and then go back and do the housekeeping we need to have for item five, which is a suspension of Rule 441. The adding, we have another thing to add? Oh, sorry. We did not, sorry. I know a lot of correspondence, okay. We need to have a vote. Any discussion on adding that to the agenda? No, this is about the first one. Hang on, I didn't call for a vote on the contract, sorry. Okay, all in favor of adding the correspondence, or the request for the tentative agreement to the agenda as number five? Say aye? Any opposed? Okay. Yes. I just did call for a vote. Okay, item number six to be, the correspondence is from the first selectman, and that request is to consider and if appropriate, per section 73-3 of the Town Code, approve a proposed solar array installation on top of the former landfill located at 100 Tabor Drive in the area identified in the previously approved landfill closure plan. Okay, so can I have a motion to add that request as new item number six?
Second motion.
Second, please.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of adding this as new item six? Please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the item is added. Okay, now, then we'll now resume with moving through the agenda, starting with new item five. We have, there's Liberta here, but in order to hear this, we need to, I'm not sure what order this votes in, but we need to have a vote to, since this was not heard in committee, we need to have a vote to suspend Rule 441 so we can hear discussion.
If you would, Madam Moderator, just to point of information, if you would just reiterate the item that we will add.
To consider and if appropriate, approve a tentative agreement between the Town of Bradford and the United Public Services Representatives, local 424, water treatment employees for the period July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2027. Okay? Do I have a motion to suspend Rule 441 so we can hear a discussion of this on the floor? Second. Any discussion or questions on this request to suspend Rule 441? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. So, Ms. Liberta, would you care to come up and talk to us about?
She's got a.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Would you care to stay where you are?
Thank you very much. So, thank you very much tonight for having me here. I've got a little out of the ordinary, I recognize it. We respectfully appeared before committee every time, but we, the union representatives of the town agreed to this PA rather recently, specifically on June 27. I didn't want to delay the discussion into August after all the special meeting at that time, so I think hopefully this is an opportunity for us to share any concerns anyone has about this agreement. It was done in very good state with all parties, and I anticipate the union will vote on it this week. So if you're supportive, it will become this really helpful in our process of moving and getting our employees paid correctly for the union company.
Would you give us some highlights of this contract? And where the town stands on it?
Sure. You know, we have four unions in our town, and this particular union up to has six agreements. So one of the agreements is for the water treatment employees. There are 13 employees in this contract. The average service for these employees is about 8.6 months. So there's a longevity there. The average age of the employees is through the bar, which are important to note when you're thinking about benefits and compensation, is 15 years old and six months. So again, in that picture I presented to you were the highlights, which I just noted in the letter. I can walk through them if that is something you desire.
Did I hear you saying the average age was 15 years? Oh, 50, okay. Are there any questions from any of the RDM members first? Or? Yes. Nope. Okay. Any questions from, yes, Representative Farber. Microphone, here.
Are there any significant differences in the outline of this contract from the ones that we approved earlier this year? And if so, what are they, and how would they affect the budget?
Well, the major elements of the budget obviously reflect on wages as well as benefits. And in this particular case, the wage is given at 2.5%. This raises some of the other contracts. So the, hold this close. The medical insurance and the employee contribution for those medical insurances and dental insurance, employee contributions vary from contract to contract. And you're very welcome to view any of these contracts online just by Googling "Branford Union Contracts." You compare any contract with another at any time, so they're public knowledge and they're very easy access. But going back to your question, I think that this contract is in line with other contracts we've adopted in the last. You know, there's operational differences in these contracts, obviously, but as far as wages and benefits, you know, they're about the same.
And every member of the body has received a copy of the contract, thank you for distributing that, so there's been about a week for us to examine it. Okay. Any other questions or concerns for Margaret regarding this particular contract? Hearing none, I hear I will need a motion to approve this contract, I'll read it again, to consider and if appropriate, approve a tentative agreement between the Town of Bradford and the United Public Services Representatives, local 424, water treatment employees, July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2027. Do I hear a motion to approve this contract?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions on this contract? Hearing none, those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The RTM votes approve, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Okay. New item number six, I will read it again. To consider and if appropriate, per section 73-3 of the Town Code, approve a proposed solar array installation on top of the former landfill located at 100 Tabor Drive in the area identified in the previously approved landfill closure plan. This was heard in committee, even though it didn't get onto our agenda, so I will ask Representative McCormick, who's filling in for Representative Adelman, to give the committee report.
Thank you. Microphone, please. Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Administrative Services Committee met on Tuesday, July 2nd, we heard this item. We also heard from Katie Shelton from Connecticut Green Bank, and they are the system owner. They'd be responsible for repairs, et cetera, of the solar panels. We heard from Representative First Selectman Cosgrove at length, and they answer a lot of questions. Questions, it sounded like a win-win for everyone. It doesn't cost anything to the town. Connecticut Green Bank gets all the federal benefits from the green energy. And the section in Ecology Park where the solar panels will be are down and inclined, so it's not in any area that would be available to be used for recreational purposes anyway. It's going to be fenced in so that no one will be able to get through and, you know, for any reason get in there. So we voted unanimously to approve, and I did that in the form of a motion.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for, yes, Mr. Tuchel?
Yeah, well, thank you, Madam Moderator. Just to add to Representative McCormick's report. So the way this works is, right, this array has been expanded. I mean, the plans were originally a smaller array, but I mean, they looked at the, you know, the land there, and as Representative McCormick said, this is on a slope, and it's not usable for recreation, so it was expanded. So what this does is, this Green Bank, you know, in Hartford, they take care of everything. They install it, they operate it. If there's any problem, they maintain it. At the end of the term of the contract, they actually come in and take it down. So there's no cost at all to the Town of Bradford for this, and we get a credit every year estimated to be about $19,000 towards the town's electric bill. And it's obviously clean energy. It comes, you know, right from the sun, from the solar array. And the town already has one in that General area on the Tabor property there, which is owned and operated by Tesla. So it's a great win-win situation, as they say, for the Town of Bradford. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes. Mr. Lofredo, sorry.
Yeah, just one quick question. Was wondering when this project would start and when the park would be closed to the public while it's under construction?
Thank you. I don't recall when the project will start, do you? Yeah, I don't know that.
I believe, Representative McCormick, that Ms. Shelton said it was going to be this fall, but I don't think any closure at all would be anticipated. I mean, they're going to have to get in there, you know, with some equipment, and build on the slope. But I don't think, you know, I don't think they're going to close the top, nothing's wrong. Just wondering.
I have some pictures of the proposed, what they look like. I mean, it's hard to tell.
Yeah, like French, I mean.
Yeah. But let me see if I have anything in here that indicates a start date. No, I don't seem to have anything in with this paperwork that indicates that, so I'm sorry.
I seem to recall from dimly, but from the presentation at the Board of Finance meeting that it was going to be this long.
Okay, well, thank you.
And just, Madam Moderator.
Yes.
Just add, I did ask the first selectman and the representative from the Green Bank about the location. It is going to be below the gazebo in that part of Ecology Park. And the question I had was, was it going to be visible to the residents who live in that area looking up? And I was told that the trees will block it. I didn't ask about the winter time. So, but this is the area of the park, as Representative McCormick stated, that is, it's not really usable. So that was, I was just.
Yes, Representative Lofredo.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Can use this on?
Yes.
Just to respond to this, Representative Everson, I do walk there, and so I purposely, after I went to the Administrative Services Committee meeting and Representative Everson asked that question, I walked to the area again and looked from where the houses are. There's absolutely no way, I don't believe, even in the winter. The slope is so steep from the early park road going up to the park that you, there's no way you could see, even if the trees were all quite down and things, the slope is like a mountain going up. So I don't believe there would be a problem for those houses. That's just my opinion, thank you.
But just to clarify, there will be no trees contented. That was stated at the meeting, let's just clarify.
The trees aren't even near. The trees are below the slope at the bottom, so, yeah.
Thanks for that clarification. We don't want that to slip out, sorry. All right. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Representative McCormick?
I also wanted to point out that this still needs to go to planning and zoning for the actual planning out of the building of it. And there will be a meeting at that point, so other people will get to show up and ask questions.
Very good, thank you. Okay, now, one more time, any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, are we ready for a vote? Okay, for, to approve, one more time. Section 73-3 of the Town Code to consider and if appropriate, approve a proposed solar array installation on top of the former landfill located at 100 Tabor Drive in the area identified in the previously approved landfill closure plan. All in favor of approving this request? Say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, let's move on to new item seven. To consider and if appropriate, approve the following transfer request from the Town Planner for the Planning and Zoning Budget for fiscal 2024, from consulting $12,500 to transfer to capital fund $700, $12,500, and then a capital fund appropriation increase, an increased transfer in, $12,500, and another increase, and the amount is left off there, so there should be another $12,500 there. So this was heard in Administrative Services, so Representative? Oh, Rules and Ordinances, I'm sorry. So, Mr. Henshaw.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So Rules and Ordinances heard this on a special meeting on July 2nd. I had requested in advance that the Town Planner send me further information, further detail on the request and what the funds were going to be used for, which he did. And I reviewed this material with the Rules and Ordinances Committee. I want just, in a nutshell, say that the purpose of this is to hire a consultant for a multi-year contract to assist the Town Planner and the Planning and Zoning Commission in the development or the rewrite of the Basic Standards section of the Town zoning regulations. And my understanding is that the consultant will be working basically at the direction of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Town Planner, that will be assisting in the details of putting together the revised ordinance, which is, I know, a time consuming a difficult task. The Town Planner did indicate the areas of the zoning regulations, or some of the areas that might be affected, including parking regulations, drainage and stormwater control, lighting, LED lighting, landscaping and sidewalks were on with this. My understanding is that the funds will be used and the consultant will be hired essentially until the funds get, you know, used up, and then the contract will be terminated. At that point, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Town Planner would have to pick up any, you know, from there to complete the development for revised regulations. Perry Smith, the Town Planner, is here tonight, so if you have any detailed questions about the use of these funds, I'm sure he could give you further insight. And I put that in the form of a motion.
Was there a vote?
Yeah. We did vote on this, and voted unanimously to approve it, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions or comments for either Mr. Henshaw or Mr. Smith? Questions or comments? Okay. Then, we have a motion on the floor, and we have a vote to approve the committee report and to approve this transfer. All in favor of approving the transfer? Please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the transfer is approved. Thank you very much for that. Okay. New item number eight, to consider and if appropriate, approve a transfer for general government buildings for fiscal '24 as follows, from contingency, $48,000, to purchase service repair and maintenance, $48,000. This was not heard in committee, so before we move forward, we are going to have to have a motion to suspend Rule 441, so it can be discussed on the floor. Do I hear a motion to suspend Rule 441? So moved. A second? Okay. Any questions or concerns about suspending Rule 441? Hearing one, we need a vote, all in favor of this action? Say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries, and we can move forward to put this question on the floor. Mr. Bonnberger, will you lead?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Happy to lead, as always. I'm just gonna, I went back and forth with Mr. Germe, who is GTB head, and wanted to get sort of his take on what it was. I'm just gonna read you the letter, the email that he sent back to me, so you have the same info that I do. Adrian, the air conditioning units in the IT server room at the police department, which serves as the main server room for the entire town, and the police department has given us problems with keeping the temperatures at 16 degrees Fahrenheit. The original units are quite old, and getting parts is getting hard to come by. With summer upon us, the need to keep this room clear is of utmost importance. Part of the contingency monies will help with the installation of two mini-split air conditioning units. We also have a similar. We also have a similar problem with the community house. Having a downed AC unit would mean our senior citizens would not have the community house to utilize as a cooling center. Part of the contingency monies will help with repairs to those air conditioning units. This seems, to me, I went back and forth with them a little bit more. Obviously, these are critical town infrastructure. We need to keep them going. So, I, I don't know if I put that in the form of a motion, but I urge the RTM to endorse this transfer. Thank you.
Um, we have, yes, we have a motion, and we do need a second?
Second.
Okay, got it. All right, are there questions or comments from the body? Mr. Black, I, I, I. Where, Mr. Black, then Mr. Toobell.
Thank you, through you, Madam Moderator. I mean, my concerns are a little, you know, I think the money's already spent anyway, but these were emergency repairs. I am a little surprised that the community center ACs will be failing so quickly. The police department ACs have been on the agenda, and we delayed repairing them to roll it into the whole renovation. Hopefully, these units can be reused in that area, you know, during the renovation or within other buildings. It's my own comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Toobell, you have a comment, question or comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. My, thank you, Madam Moderator. Questions, Representative Bonnerberger? So, have these repairs been fixed? I mean, is the AC back on in both places, sir?
I'm not aware of that. I assume, as you said, that that's the case, that this is, this money has already been spent on these issues, but I couldn't tell. I don't know. I would say that whether it has been spent or not, if it hasn't been spent, the fixes haven't been made, then they should be made. Let's do as possible.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the matter? Okay, Mr. Henshaw.
So, I had heard, and I don't know if it's, is in fact true or not, but that the town might be looking, Community Center might be looking at actions to get some of that repair money from the original contract. So again, I can't validate that that's true, but it may be one action that would reduce the exposure.
Mr. Everson?
The First Electman explained to the Board of Finance that there is an issue with the community house, AC in general, the entire system. And it seems to be related to, I guess, Samsung. And so the town is considering and looking into whether or not there is some form of recourse. So, this appears to be a temporary fix. The First Electman couldn't be with us tonight, but we'll see.
Uh, Mr. Smith, yes, thank you. Mr. Toobell.
Yes, this was discussed extensively at the Board of Finance meeting, June twenty-fourth. And some of the items I wrote down were that, as far as the community house goes, right where Representative Henshaw said about Samsung, there's a whole scope of work that has to be developed there to correct the problem. And it's beyond the Samsung warranty right now. So, you're right, there might have to be an action taken, you know, in court to, to recoup, you know, the money that we spent for that system, because it looks like the system is defective. And just to confirm, Representative Bonnerberger, it does state here that the police, as you said, the main server room for the town, you know, it's been fixed. Thank you.
Okay, other comments or questions? Hearing none? We have a, a, a motion, and we have a second. I will call for a vote on approval of this transfer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none, the motion carries. New item nine, to consider and if appropriate, approve the following transfer request from the tax collector for fiscal twenty-four, from tax refunds, twenty-one thousand dollars, to overtime. This was heard in Admin Services, and I'll call on Representative McCormick to give the committee report.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. We did hear from Tax Collector of Infarado, and apparently, these were, this was a critical project that required additional overtime to ensure the success of the computation of all the accounts, like five hundred accounts that had to be taken into consideration, looked at, and rectified, so that's fine. And it did come out of committee unanimous, as well.
Yes, in favor.
In favor, so I put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, so, we have a motion, committee report, to approve this transfer. Are there questions or comments for Representative McCormick? No questions? Okay, hearing none, I'll have a vote on approving this transfer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? None? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Um, number, I, new item number ten, to consider and if appropriate, create an ordinance to establish a harbor management commission pursuant to Connecticut General Statute twenty-two A dash one thirteen A. And I will call on Mr. Henshaw to give the committee report.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This item was heard in the six eighteen meeting of Rules and Ordinance. A working group has been assigned to the development of this ordinance, if that is the route we've decided to take. And we have had several meetings, the subgroups had several meetings with people in town, the harbor master, and some other consultants to get a better feeling of the, what the needs are and the purpose of the ordinance. So, we're making progress on it. As I said before, this is a very complex and somewhat expensive endeavor for the town, so we're taking it carefully and probably will not be in a position to propose anything until, well, until under my estimation. But the committee decided to, or determined that we should re, ask the RTM to re-refer this item. Put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you very much. Uh, we have a motion to re-refer. Any questions or comments from Mr. Henshaw on this refer, re-referral? I second the motions. Uh, okay, we have a second. We don't have to, it's fine. Okay, so we'll call for a vote to approve re-referring the establishment of a harbor commission back to committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none, we re-refer that, and we'll look forward to hearing to, on your progress. Okay, new item eleven, to consider and if appropriate, create an ordinance which will impose reasonable restrictions on short-term rentals in Branford. Once again, Mr. Henshaw, will you give the committee report?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Again, this was heard in the six eighteen meeting of Rules and Ordinance. We, as with the other ordinance, we have set up a working group to pursue the possibility of creating this ordinance. One of the things that the working group is just about complete with right now is a community survey to get input from the community on feelings and their attitude toward short-term rentals and short-term rental issues. That survey is about ready to be published. However, again, this, this will probably take us into the late fall, early winter, before the commission to create a possible ordinance itself. So, the committee decided or requested that we re-refer this, and I put that, that was the unanimous vote. I put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you very much. So, the question is to approve re-referring this ordinance on restrictions on short-term rentals back to committee? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, and it is re-refered. New item twelve, to consider and if appropriate, create an ordinance to change the position of town clerk from an elected position to an appointed one. Mr. Henshaw, you're on again.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So, this, this item was heard in the seven-two meeting of Rules and Ordinance. Prior to that meeting, the, the working group had developed a pretty much final draft of the ordinance. That was sent to the town attorney for comment. The town attorney responded with some requested changes and some, some possible changes, but not required changes. The committee reviewed Bill Exco's, uh, requests, and we, everything that he felt that we definitely needed to do and changing, warranting changing, we did. A couple of things that he said were not necessary, we let in just because it allowed some clarification to the community without going back and looking at state legislation. At any rate, that was presented in the form of a final, final draft, including a response to the attorney's comments, and the committee voted to approve it. However, and that vote was unanimous. However, we were not able to get this published five days in advance of this meeting, so I would therefore just personally request the chair of the committee that we re-refer this to the next meeting of the RTM. It's not particularly an urgent action on our part. I put that in the form of a motion.
Second?
Yes, yes, to re-refer. As I understand it, because it wasn't properly noticed, we can't vote on it tonight, anyway. Mr. Black?
Madam Chair, just as a technical matter, it shouldn't be a motion to re-refer, which would send it back to the committee. We just want to hold it on our agenda and act on it at the next meeting, so I ask that if it's a front meeting, that we just continue this matter to the next meeting.
So, I'll amend my recommendation.
Amend it to Mr. Toobell, so he gets. Okay, very good. So, the request is to hold this over to our next meeting. I guess we vote on holding it over, okay? All in favor of holding this to our next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none, the item is held until our next regularly scheduled meeting. Uh, item, new item thirteen, to hear a parliamentarian's review of Greg Rollman's correspondence to the RTM dated June sixth, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Henshaw.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This item was heard in the June eighteenth meeting of Rules and Ordinance. As I think you all know from previous RTM meetings, Mr. Rollman had sent the correspondence to the RTM, objecting to what he felt was an inability of the public to speak if the budget being at an appropriate time. And asked for a parliamentarian review of that, of his letter to us. So, with that in hand, and as the parliamentarian, I took a, I listened to the full RTM meeting and how it was conducted. I wrote a parliamentarian's review and sent it to, I think, everybody in the RTM. I sent it to Greg Rollman. And it, it's quite a long document, but my final paragraph was the parliamentarian's conclusions of the RTM meeting of May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four was legitimately processed, that its actions were properly taken, and that the right of public speech was not denied. I did send my parliamentarian review to the town attorney to get opinion from him, and he took again, took a look at the meeting itself, and my, my letter, my parliamentarian findings. And again, I won't read his full comments, but, but his conclusion was, as such, the meeting and question was conducted in accordance with applicable law. Regulations and the actions stated at that meeting are legally binding. So, our town attorney has concurred, and the parliamentarian has stated, and we feel that the meeting was legally held. There's no, there's no action on the part of the RTM for this, it's just a report. One thing the Rules and Ordinance did take a look at was a suggestion that I had made to make a recommendation. We did, I, the recommendation was to, from the, our Rules and Ordinance to the RTM and to the committee chairs, was essentially that at the beginning of any committee meeting or a RTM meeting, either the moderator or the chair of the meeting should make it clear to the meeting itself, including the members from the public that are present, how they intend to request input to any item being looked at for action. That can take the form of, for instance, in the RTM meeting, starting with a request from RTM members for comment, then going to executive issues and asking for comment, then going to the members of the public and asking for comment. However, in other circumstances, the chair or the moderator could decide that they would just generally ask for questions of anyone in the room who could respond at being up to the prerogative of the chair or the moderator. However, I think the recommendation is clarifying at the beginning of a meeting makes sense, and I think would help the public especially to know what they, they should expect if they do want to speak. So, that's, again, that's a recommendation, though vote needs to be taken on it. But it was voted by the Rules and Ordinance to be made as a recommendation. I have sent that to the moderator, so that's important to me.
Thank you very much, and the moderator has taken a look at the recommendation, and it is a good one. And I will take it under advisement and keep it under advisement going forward. Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes the regular business. Before I call for other business from, to come before the RTM from the public, I have one piece of correspondence that I wanted to read at the end instead of the beginning. It comes through one of our members, and it is from the Society of Nepalese in America. And it's, Dear all residents of Branford, we are pleased to announce that just like last year, this year our society will be organizing the Nepal Day Parade. The event will take place on Saturday, July thirteenth, that's this coming Saturday. The parade will showcase Nepalese arts, culture, traditions, and customs, with participants dressed in traditional attire and performing Nepalese music and dances, including various floats and vodka. I'm not sure what that is. Maybe we can get some guidance on that. We warmly invite you and all members of your family to join us and enhance the beauty of this program with your presence. Date, July thirteenth, that's this Saturday, time nine AM sharp, it says here. Address, forty-six Church Street, Branford, that's starting at the community house. So, we wanted to announce that last year's event was lovely, and we wanted the public to know that there's another one coming up. So, is there, have we concluded with that? Are there any other business to come before the RTM? We have a member of the public, Mr. Toobell, I'll start with you, and then we'll, we'll come forward. Mr. Toobell.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'd just like to.
Okay, sorry.
Just like to request a moment of silence, please, for Charles Shelton. He was a long-term Board of Finance member, I think for twenty-five years. He came to the Board of Finance from the ambulance commission, which was then merged into the, you know, to the, the fire commission. So, at that time, there was an opening on the Board of Finance, so they put him on. And I mean, if you ever went to the meetings, you know, and, or, you know, if you watched him on access TV, you know, you would see that, you know, he really did his homework. And he was fully prepared for every meeting, and he, you know, he, he was incredible. And, you know, the other thing he did was, he actually, you know, gave his life to Branford elderly and sick. I mean, he owned and operated Branford Hills Healthcare Center. I mean, he owned and operated Brantford Hills Healthcare Center. That was one of the best, the best nursing homes in the state. And he owned and operated that for 50 years. So he was a great person and so, thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'd like to express, in addition to that, our sorrow at your loss, personal loss, frankly, you know, it was your own fault.
Yeah, thank you.
Call for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Representative Mr. Black? We need a microphone for Kira, I'm going.
Mr. Black?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So it's basically, you explained earlier, that this will be the event to organize Nepal event in Brantford, this Saturday, on July 13th. We're trying to bring some extra flavor, spice in the committee and then let other, you know, we are working other people too. So we're gonna start prior at 9:00 a.m. from our community house. So there'll be a different red color to this, with a different culture, there'll be dances, and then some people are singing traditional songs in the morning. And within time, starting at 5:00 p.m., there'll be some cultural event, some local artists, Nepalese, Indian, and English song, which will be of good flavor to the people. So I'll ask everybody to invite, if you know, and so participants, and thank you.
Thank you. Could you tell us where the 5:00 p.m. event will be?
At the same place.
At the community house?
No, not at the town, it's in Brantford.
Oh, it's the town, great, okay. You're starting at the community house, right?
Quarter, quarter in the morning will be from the community house. And the concert, our cultural event, at the evening time, is on the Brantford.
Okay, thank you very much.
What's luck?
Oh, yeah, what is?
Tell us what's luck?
Lucky.
Oh, okay. So lucky is a, is a traditional dance. Mr. Gani, he knows more about- So it's a, it's a traditional, traditional dance.
Okay.
They usually do it on, on the way, culture. So it's a traditional dance.
Lucky is, you'll have a woman's-
Probably.
It's like a vampire one.
Yeah, like I say, it's a flavor.
We are blessed and honored to have the Nepalese community. And if you, if you in the public have ever been to any of their events, they are quite wonderful, so we encourage you to come in the morning and come in the evening and have a great time.
And a lot of spice.
All right, anybody else from the RTM? And we have a member who would like to come up, or a member in the public would like to come up. Please tell us who you are and where you live, and we have about three minutes, do you think? Yes, it's right here.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Evgenia Pikarska, and I'm the CEO of Skupu Medals. We are a small, high-tech manufacturing company here in Brantford. And I'm here today to respectfully request the committee to approve our request for exemption from property taxes for the manufacturing equipment that we have. So we have been in Brantford since 2020, and every year we receive this exemption for the manufacturing equipment. But this year, due to very unfortunate changes in our staff, disrupted the processes, internal processes, and we filed the property taxes late. And because of us filing late, we did not receive the exemption that we were typically received. So for us, this represents very significant financial hardship. It's, we're a very small company. We only have three full-time people and three part-time personnel. And 98% of our income comes from grants, government grants that are specifically funding, built-in of manufacturing equipment with the technology that we're developing, and developing a technology. So they do not cover things like property taxes. And so this is, becomes a very significant financial burden for us because all our money is poured towards building equipment. And I just wanted to also emphasize that we believe that we are growing into becoming an important contributor to the local economy because we're building a really high-tech manufacturing business. And if you're interested, please come and visit us. I'd be happy to show you, actually brought a part to show you what we do. We have very unusual new processes that are very energy efficient, very different from traditional manufacturing. So have a lot of benefits for areas such as robotics, space, hydrogen infrastructure, general industrial applications, you know, solar panels that you mentioned. And so granting us exemption would really benefit our company significantly and allow us to continue, grow and develop and become a meaningful contributor to Connecticut, Brantford, and Connecticut in general. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak and thank you for consideration. And if you have any other questions, please, you know, let me know now or by email correspondence, we'd be happy to provide more information. Thank you.
And if your matter has been referred, so please do attend the committee meetings in the admin services, and you can look on the town website for when your next meeting will be scheduled.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Other questions? I have a clarification, maybe Representative Hatchell can clarify this. I'm not sure the RTM's jurisdiction is tax exemptions. I believe that's- For this one is, this, or, yeah. For this particular ordinance, we went around a lot on this before, even at the beginning of correspondence, if it's under this particular state statute, it goes to the-
Yeah, I believe the statute 1294E, it specifies that if the company, if I interpreted it correctly, if the company had received exemptions in the past and it was a standard for it in the past, we can request that exemption from the RTM specifically. That's my understanding.
I, it's our understanding as well, there was a lot of consultation beforehand, is this the right place to get it? So I don't understand it myself. That's the way that the thing is meant, so. Mr. Hartwell?
So, thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm sure this will be covered in the committee, but can you give us an idea of what is the expense?
$26,000.
$26,000, thank you.
Are there other questions or comments from, I'm sorry, I could butcher your last name.
It's okay, Pikarska.
Oh, that's right.
I know, I'm very, very worried.
I can't see it, so, okay, thank you very much. Please keep your eye out for a delay in the committee meetings.
Thank you very much.
All right, any other business from you guys? No?
Motion to adjourn.
I will hear a motion to adjourn out of the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? We are adjourned at 9:17 p.m.